Don't let me sign in. Okay, I'm in. Sorry, guys. Apologize for being late. It's called the meeting to order September the 2nd of the Smyrna City Council. And we have our invocation by... I can't see it, I have my glasses. Reverend Mitchell from... You'll come forward, please. Sorry.
From St. Thomas the Apostle here, Smyrna.
Thank you. Well, please stand.
Yes, we are new to Smyrna. We just got incorporated.
Let's all stand for the invocation, please.
Let us pray. God of all creation, we give you thanks for this day and for all its blessings, especially for these young people on the Smyrna Sharks Swim Team who are a true example of the energy and vitality of our community. We also ask that you guide our mayor and city council as they deliberate the needs of our community to those who've come to express their views on this work. We ask that you grant your gifts of wisdom and understanding so that your will be done. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under the mayor's report, we do have a couple of changes that we're going to be making.
I cannot hear you. The PA system does not seem to be working.
Is it working? Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't talking with my head turned the wrong way. One item is going to be... We're going to table 10B because the gentleman's not able to be here tonight. So we will table this to what date, Mr. Taylor?
I believe that the gentleman's mother's here. I would suggest tabling it to the meeting in two weeks, meeting of September the 15th. But I'm not sure of his availability and she may be one we need to...
Okay. So is the mother here? Do you think tabling until the 15th will be sufficient or does it need to be longer?
Can you come up here? Come on up.
Is that you?
Yes.
I think 15th will be fine.
So we'll put it on the 15th? Okay. We'll do that when we get to that item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The other item we're going to do is we're going to suspend the rules to add something to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of adding an item to the consent agenda.
Olive. Motion and second. Okay, that's a six-zero in favor of suspending the rules. So we'll deal with that when we get to the consent.
Well, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and move to add item 8D to the agenda, which will be to call a special called meeting of the mayor and council on Monday, September 8th, 7:30 PM here in these council chambers.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote. Okay, that's a six-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'd like to have the Smyrna Sharks come forward, the swim team, and I would like to introduce the President, Chris Lash. If y'all will come forward to the podium and tell us about your team and have all your team come and stand up in front, that'd be great. And they can all face this way and look up at this screen and you'll be able to see yourself.
Hi, good evening. First of all, thank you all for letting us come before you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and council members, and all of our Smyrna Sharks and residents who are here. We had an amazing season, like always, for this Smyrna.
All right. I want you guys to spread out. Spread out this way. Spread out. We want to be able to see everybody. That's good.
The last time we were before you, it was to honor our dive team who had won the championship. That was about four years ago. And since then, we have grown. And boy, have we grown. We were 145 members of our swim team and about 30 on our dive team. We are now 420 across all of our four teams. We now have four teams. We have two competitive swim teams, which are represented behind me. There's a very small portion of them, of course. We have a rookie program with 100-plus members. We have our dive team. All of those are waitlisted. We are a growing, big community in Smyrna. Swimming is huge. We are extremely proud of all the accomplishments our swimmers have done. The swimmers behind me competed in the GRPA state swim meet. Of our 300 members who are on the competitive team, we had 86 who went to qualify. Of those 56 out of 86 qualified for the state meet. Those are huge numbers for such a small little pool to draw from. Of those 86 swimmers, 71 individual events were qualified in. These swimmers helped qualify in 71 events and 27 relays. Those are staggering numbers for 86 children. We had... After that, we had 56 swimmers who qualified, who actually qualified, made it to state, and 30 of those made finals. That is, the top eight in all of Georgia swimming made it. And we had quite a few swimmers here, and many of them... Some of you are going to have to raise your hand if you were in the top eight of swimming and you made it to the podium. If you'd raise your hand, whether you're a relay or individual swimmers. I would like to point out, we had a lot of top-three finishers as well. I'm not sure they're all here tonight, but I would like to point out specifically some of our top-three finishers. We had Will Overly. Where are you, Will? Will is our double winner. He won a top-three finish in both of his events. We also had our medley relay, our nine-ten girls' medley relay of Elizabeth Tilt. Raise your hand when I call your name, please. Gracie Young, Sophia Caseras, and Amanda King. I'm not sure she's here. They all won in their medley relay in the top three. We had Elizabeth Tilt in her event, come in, I believe, second, Elizabeth? Was it second? Yes. Will, I already mentioned you twice. Chloe Van Nord, I'm not sure she's here, also top three. We had an 18-year-old boy who spent his final season with our team. He grew up with our team, came in first place in both of his events. He's not here tonight because he's at college now.
Wow.
We had Asilbo Sewaljimani, also a 15-, 18-year-old boy. And then I have our Lexus, come here. I've got to put you up here with me. Where are you? I know you're here. Lexus, come here. Lexus, here, came in first and set the state record in the 11-12 girls', 25 fly. So we're... We've had a great season. 50 fly. Oh, she's 11-12 now. They're all growing up. Doing first place is amazing, but setting the state record, they don't fall easily, they don't fall often. So this is a big honor and shows the strength of this team. This team across the board is amazing. Its growth, its strength has been phenomenal. I've been with the team for 16 years, and to watch it grow from, I think it was 65 kids when I joined, to 420 and growing, we could field another team, but we need a bigger pool. So I want to thank all of you for supporting. We have a couple of board members who have children on the team, or, excuse me, council members who are on the team, and they've seen the strength of our team growing and how much fun it is. We're huge in the community, business leaders, people who work, teach, live around the community. And I just can't thank you all for supporting the swim team and giving us this facility to swim in every day. And thank you guys for doing a great job.
We're very proud of all of you. Thank you so much for representing Smyrna.
I neglected to say one thing, our coach, our head coach for, oh, gosh, forever, Sergey, come here. I have to point out Sergey Yusinov. He's from the Ukraine and now an American citizen, and he has been our coach for many years and a huge part of the success of our team. So I can't thank him enough.
Okay, next on our agenda is our... We have no land issues or zoning annexations. We have no privileged licenses. We go to formal business. And Mr. Taylor, the background, please, sir.
Okay, this is for item 6A, which is an approval of an amendment to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, entitled Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Section 6-51, Issuance of Photo Permit for All Employees Involved in Serving Alcoholic Beverages. The current ordinance actually limits the ability for those who have a felony to receive a permit to serve alcoholic beverages in the City of Smyrna. And with this, the ordinance also limits the discretion of the Licensed Variance Board to issue a permit for those who've had previous legal issues. This has led to an increase in the amount of appeals that have reached the level of mayor and council. And so this particular ordinance will... is an attempt to rectify this by adding to the discretionary powers of the Licensed Variance Board. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. This is Ms. Bluestein.
Does anyone have any questions or anything that they want to add to this before I make the motion? No? Okay. With that being said, I would like to move for the approval of ordinance 2014-1, the amendment to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, entitled Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Section 6-51, the issuance of a photo permit for all employees involved in serving alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Okay. All those in... Everybody, please vote. We have somebody? Oh, okay, it's a five-zero and Ms... Who's not here? Oh, Ms. Wilkinson, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll move to the next item. There's no commercial building permits. We have the consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, would you read that, please?
Certainly. We have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the August 18th, 2014, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is to award RFP 15-001, Building Automation Systems for the Community Center and Library HVAC Controls and DDC Upgrade to the lowest bidder. Controls Concess for $52,860 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item C is an approval to allow Williams Park Neighborhood Association Meeting to be held in council chamber September 23rd, 2014, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And item D is to call a special called meeting of the mayor and council for Monday, September 8th, at 7:30 PM here in the council chambers.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. All right, everybody, please vote. It's a six-zero. It's not showing up on my screen, but I can see it here. Show cause hearings, Mr. Taylor, please.
Item A, on the show cause hearings, an appeal of the denial of application for an alcoholic server's permit for Universe Winston. Ms. Winston appeared before the Licensed Variance Board in early August, and she had a issue that Licensed Variance Board was not able to decide upon that evening, and they actually postponed their decision, and she is here tonight to appeal the postponing of that decision.
Okay, will you come forward, please?
I will turn... Pardon me for sitting down, but I'll turn my microphone on so that this will... For the record...
Will you move the microphone?
Yeah, Ms. Butts, if you and Ms. Winston will speak into the microphone. Ms. Butts, just for our record, state your name, please.
I, Eleanor Butts.
And where are you employed?
Smyrna Police Department, Records Section.
And in the Records Section, as in the regular course of business at the police department, does the police... Does Smyrna Police Department run criminal background checks on applicants for alcohol server permits?
Yes, we do.
And did the police department run the alcohol... run the criminal background check on Universe Winston?
Yes, sir, we did.
And did the background check that was performed, did it disclose a pending felony?
There is a felony out there. There is no disposition.
There's a pending felony that doesn't show any disposition?
That's correct, sir.
All right. I don't have any further questions for you. If the mayor and council have questions for you, we can take them.
Ms. Bluestein, do you have any questions? Of Eleanor, the records lady?
It wasn't that, I'm sorry. Eleanor, I'm sorry. So this felony has not been... There has not been a court date, to the best of your knowledge, at this time?
Right, to the best of my knowledge, there has not been a court date.
Okay. Was that the principal reason why, or was it the nature of the felony that you denied the permit? Or was it just a general, because there was a felony out there?
That's because there was a felony. You only allowed so many, and it was a felony within the last five years. And like I said, there's no disposition out there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
What is the typical time for a case like this to come to a decision?
Well, it just depends on the disposition, once the person appears in court. It depends on the disposition that the court gives to the particular case.
What's the duration of this pending status? How long has it been?
I'm not certain how long it's been.
You know what the pending felony charge is?
Yes, it's a financial transaction card fraud.
Okay, and you know when that was levied, that charge was?
I believe... I don't have the note right in front of me, but I believe it was February 2014.
Okay. Thank you.
No more questions of Eleanor Jeffrey? There's no more questions of her.
I don't have any more questions for Ms. Butts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Winston, if you'll step up, please. When you appeared before in front of Licensed Variance, there was a court date that was scheduled for earlier in August. Have you had a court date on this charge?
Yes, I go to court September 4th at 1:30.
Oh, so you have a court date this week that's coming up on this charge?
Yes, I do.
All right, well, would you just state to the mayor, Pro Tem, and the council why you want them to exercise their discretion and grant your alcohol server permit?
Yes. I really, really need it for my job. It was at my manager's request for me to have a liquor license because I'm a hostess, and sometimes I run drinks as wise as Coke beverages. I cannot touch alcohol because I don't have my permit, and I don't want to lose my job for it. And I learned from my mistake that I've made to not do anything like that again, and I just greatly appreciate if you guys would please give me the chance for me to have it so that I can keep my job and not lose it. That's the only job that I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Winston. I don't have more questions for you. If the mayor, Pro Tem, or the members of the council do, they can ask them.
Ms. Winston, you understand the seriousness of serving alcohol and the challenge we have to make sure that it's a safe transaction for the public?
Yes, I do.
And one misstep there is a very serious matter. We take it extremely seriously. And not only would you lose your ability to serve should you violate that, but the establishment would be suffering a penalty as well. You're aware of that?
Yes, I'm a hostess. I do not touch alcohol. I do not run it because of the fact that I don't have my liquor license. So I do not touch it or run it. I... It was at my manager's request of me getting it. It was for everybody in the job to have it because it was on... It's on him as for corporate, telling him that everyone in the restaurant needs it. I don't touch it. I don't run it at all.
But should you have a permit, that adds a layer of responsibility in addition, both to you and to the establishment? Because their permit, their ability to serve alcohol at all depends upon everybody performing 100% of the time the rules.
Yes, I do understand.
Okay.
Anybody over here have a question?
I'm just not extremely comfortable with doing a disposition on this until after the court date. Is there a possibility we could postpone this for two weeks until the court date?
The rules of procedure would permit a motion to postpone the decision.
Okay, that's what I was... I guess that was what I was asking. Could I make a motion then to postpone till... for two weeks? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Universe.
Thank you, Mr. Watch. He has something he wants to say.
Ms. Winston, is the pending charge have anything to do with a customer and a previous employer?
No, it doesn't at all. It has nothing to do with anybody that is an employer or was an employer that I worked with at my job at all.
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry. Mr. Lynn, guys, hand up. I didn't see that.
Ms. Winston, just to clarify, you have a scheduled court date for Thursday?
Yes, it's September 4th at 1:30. I have an option of doing diversion, which I am going to do, for me to not have it on my record at all.
Okay. And was there a court date scheduled in August that then was postponed or continued?
Yes, there was. I had a court date in August. I... My lawyer had postponed it to having it for September 4th at 1:30, and that was her offer, was for me to go to diversion program so that it will not be on my record. For the meantime, I really would, you know, appreciate if I could have my liquor license, but I do understand of why it would be a risk of me having it.
Ms. Winston, let me say, you know, you're... You appear to be a nice young lady, and I know it's very frightening to be up here testifying in public, speaking in public. I mean, that scares a lot of people, and I don't care how long we've been up here. It's still kind of intimidating. So I appreciate you having the courage to come up here and face us and make your request because I know it's not easy. And I'd like to hope that you can resolve these issues and go on and lead a good and productive life and earn a living and do all the right things and treat people right, particularly Smyrna residents, Smyrna customers, head of Smyrna business. Is there any reason why you would suggest we not table this for two weeks to give you a chance to go to court, see if you can get into that diversion program, get this charge handled, and put yourself in a better position to come back and see us in two weeks? Is there any reason not to table this?
I had talked to my manager about it, and he's actually being very patient with me. And I was hoping, when I talked to him, he told me, "I will give you a week." And I went back to him because I got denied, and I told him, hopefully, September 2nd, when I come to here, that I would have the possibility of getting it. He's been really patient and lenient with me on it, so I don't know how much longer I would actually have to wait. That's my only income. That's my only job that I have for right now, and I really can't afford to lose it at all.
I understand all that, and I think we're all very sympathetic to that situation. If we have to vote tonight, it's more likely the vote would not go your direction, I think, as opposed to if we can wait two weeks and if you can get these charges resolved with the court, I think that's much better for you and, as you say, would remove this from your record and lift that cloud and put you in a much stronger position. I hope you could talk with your manager and blame us if need be, but saying we wanted you to go back to court, and since we don't... Well, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, there would be one other option, and that would be to schedule this on the... as the first item on the special called council meeting agenda.
Be that.
If we... We're going to have a meeting Monday night, special called council meeting, 7:30. What? Would it be better for you if you could go to court on Thursday, and if you think you could get this resolved, we could hear your case again Monday night, and it would only be one week instead of two? Are you confident you can get this resolved?
I am. I am... I would actually... Is there not any earlier during the day that it could happen?
No, because we only... We only meet when we... We've got to notify the press and schedule everything and have staff and...
Okay.
All those things. It's a big production kind of thing.
All right. I'm confident and I hope when I come back that I do have the chance of getting it.
Then, Ms. Bluestein, let me suggest, if you are agreeable, that we table this to Monday night, September 8th.
That's fine with me. I had thought about asking about that, but since it was a special call meeting, I didn't know if we could interject something else into it or not.
And the other item on that agenda will be a long one, so, you know, I'd suggest we hear her first.
That's fine.
Dispense with it, I hope, quickly.
As long as it's acceptable.
At the special call meeting, mayor and council can entertain any business that they could entertain in regular.
Okay.
As long as it's properly noticed.
Okay.
And advertised.
Ms. Winston, out of abundance of caution, then I am going to make a motion to table this until September the 8th at our 7:30 special call meeting, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So by then, hopefully, you will have been to court and will have... will know what is the outcome of the potential felony, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's see, we need a second on that motion.
Okay, at this time, then, I will make a motion to table this, the application denial of the service permit for Ms. Universe Winston till the September 18th special call meeting.
8th.
September the 8th. I'm sorry. Special call meeting at 7:30 PM.
That's okay.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Fennel, second up. Please vote.
It's no second is required on a tabling motion, but you need to vote.
So we have five people that have voted.
Pardon? Well, I did, and nothing is... Nothing's happening.
Yes, her motion was to table this until September the 8th, and we have a second. So we need to vote. Okay, that's six-zero, and so we're going to table this till Monday night at 7:30 here in the council chambers.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No problem. Y'all have a good day.
Okay, we'll go to item B, which was the appeal of the application, denial of the application, that we agreed to table that until the 15th. Was that, Mr. Taylor? So we need to hear a motion and a second to table that till the 15th. You have a second? A motion and a second, and it's time to vote. Okay, that's a six-zero. I do have one announcement I want to make before we do our committee reports. The mayor wanted me to let everybody know that he had planned on being here tonight, but he had hip replacement surgery on Wednesday. A week before that, he had carpal tunnel surgery, so by the end of the day today, he wasn't up to making the trip down here. But he does plan to be here on the 15th, so he wanted me to let everyone know the reason he wasn't here. Okay. We'll go to... We have any citizens input? Terry, no citizens input? Okay, I guess we will... Okay, I guess we will go to committee reports, and we'll start tonight with Ms. Bluestein.
Other than, I hope everybody had a good Labor Day weekend. I have no report this evening, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Nullwitz.
Thank you. Yes, Food Truck Tuesdays continue through the end of the month, and the Smyrna Farmers' Market is still continuing also for things happening in and around this area. And there, I would recommend checking the city's Facebook page, that's where you can get ongoing updates for just about anything happening in the city. Those are also posted on the webpage. The Facebook is a lot more instantaneous and interactive, especially if you're trying to find out things like, is Food Truck Tuesday is going to be rained out, so, which it wasn't. But I highly recommend checking out the city's Facebook page, which you can get to from the city's website, smyrna.gav. With that, I yield.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you. I have no announcements, or no committee reports this evening, but I need to announce that I will not be present for the September 15 city council meeting. It's Cobb County spring break, and my wife, being a teacher, tells me that we're going to be gone for a few days, so I won't be here for that meeting. Thank you.
Good for you. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to announce several things that are going on at the library, and, and there's so many things going on that you should check the website and the calendar, because I really can't talk about them all, but during the month of September, there's a special Smyrna Reads about a book about a, like a golden retriever who saved a wounded warrior's life, and it's called Until Tuesday. And so that is going on through the month of September. And I also want to announce that the September 7, 2014, at 3:00 p.m. at the Smyrna Community Center, there is a lecture, the first Sunday lecture, that's sponsored by the Friends of the Smyrna Library, and it's called The Great American Composer, and that is in celebration of National Music, Classic Music Month. And then on November 1, the Friends of the Smyrna Library has a Dinner with Destiny, where you can meet Mr. Lincoln, Abraham Lincoln. It's an actor that is acting as President Lincoln, and that should be a very interesting and lightning event as well. And that one is on Saturday, November 1, at 6:30 p.m. at the community center. Thanks so much. With that, I yield.
Mr. Lenka.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, pro tem. Just one brief announcement, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, September 13, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Wolf Center, there will be a free shredding event sponsored by Keeps Smyrna Beautiful. If you've got papers that you need to discard and want to have shredded, but it's more than your little home paper shredder can do, box them up and bring them, 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. The Wolf Center, Saturday, September 13. We've done a couple of these, they've been a great success. This is a great convenience for Smyrna residents to be able to get that service. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Lenka. Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to add along with Ms. Nullwitz our appreciation to the Smyrna Sharks for the great job they did this year in helping our kids navigate the waters, but also, as you could see, take our message statewide, and we have some really great, talented kids and good quality instructors. That instructor from Ukraine is awesome, and I'm glad he's here and helping our kids. Now an American citizen, we're proud of that. Schools are back in session, so we urge you to make sure that around our schools, as you navigate, I know parents who are dropping off kids sometimes get distracted. We need everybody to pay very close attention. No cell phones while you're in the line, dropping off the kids or picking up the kids, it's very distracting. And of course, all of the school zones have posted speed limits, they're down low for safety of the kids. Make sure you take great caution as you help. And of course, the school buses have cameras installed now, so as they stop and they put out that flag, that means everybody stops around them so that the only thing moving will be the kids. And we want to make sure safety first there. This year, this month, September, is Preparedness Month. We're going to hear more about it at next meeting when we have a fuller report, but you can go to the city website and look at our preparedness efforts in the Smyrna Fire Department. It's a great opportunity for you to revisit your family's plan to be prepared in the case of an emergency in your home, how you deal with a fire potentially in your home, how do you deal with storm damage. Make sure you're backstocked with water and other supplies as necessary should the power go out, flashlights and such. So just an added tip, we remind ourselves on a regular basis, and this is Preparedness Month, so please take heed and prepare your family. And then finally, this Saturday night is the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation Annual Gala. It's at the Smyrna Community Center, and if you want more information and find out how you can get tickets or to support the cause, go to www.spsf.org, that's Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, s p s f dot org, and you can find out more there. And then if you will join me, if you see a member of our public safety personnel, whether it's a marshal, a police officer, a firefighter, or someone else on the team, please thank them for the work they do and the service they render to us to keep us safe 24/7/365. With that, Madam Mayor, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor. Jeffrey, do you have anything?
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Graham?
Thank you. I want to say to the mayor, I hope you're feeling much better. We did miss you tonight, so get well and be back here soon, and thank all of you for being here and watching the Smyrna City Council. With that, it is now 8:10, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Yeah. You know me. [laughing].[1793.37]